I'm going to thank you all for coming this evening. Please, I would like to ask that you make sure your cellphones are on mute or turned off, and please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge allegiance is to the fighting of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no other name, and justice for all. Again, thanks for our audience here in the commission chamber and also at home watching. I'd like to start the meeting with a roll call, please. Cassie?
Ryan?
Here.
Dan?
Yeah.
Don?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
John?
Here.
Next item would be for financial conflict of interest. Have any of our members?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
I do with the claims part two, and I will be upstanding.
Ask for a motion to approve the agenda?
I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on to approve the agenda for this evening. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. We don't have to wait for 6:05 for public comment, do we?
No.
Now's the time for public comment. Public comment is a time for persons to address this body on any subject. No action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until a matter itself has been specifically included on an agenda as an item open, which action will be taken. Each person has up to three minutes to speak. There shall be no personal attacks against members of this body, county staff, individuals, or organizations. The chair has the authority to enforce this policy. Failure to adhere to these rules may result in forfeiture of the remaining speaking time. Are there any public comments at this time? Seeing and none, public comment is now closed. Eric, you get an extra five minutes to give us your E-911. I mean, Amy, you get an extra five minutes now to...
And I'm going to defer to Dwight Johnson.
Okay, perfect.
Microphone's not on.
Good evening. As Amy mentioned, my name is Dwight Johnson. I'm the IT director for the city of Yankton. I generally oversee operations relating to communications and IT in the city. Chairman Mark Gordon, members of the Yankton County Commission. Pleased to be here tonight to try to address some of the questions that came up during the 2025 budgeting process. With me, as you noticed, is City Manager Amy Leo, Communications Supervisor Julia Heesey, Commissioner Weber from the State Commission, and Planets Officer Lisa Yardley. Julia is the Operations Manager for the Dispatch Center. Has over 20 years of experience. So anything that we have as far as questions related to operations, she'll be able to answer for us in addition to the financial discussion tonight. I appreciate your opportunity to answer some of the questions that came up. I know you guys have a full agenda tonight, and I hope to be as brief and concise as I can in answering those questions and providing some additional information, both about the additional revenue from the state of South Dakota and the increase in the requests from the city. 911 fees are collected by the state on a per-line, full-line basis. Those costs, those funds are directly committed to costs related to the installation, maintenance, or operation of a public safety answering point or PISA. Directly related costs are those that are necessarily incurred by PISA to process emergency and non-emergency calls. Relate information from those requests to the public safety agencies or public service agencies and provide support to the responding agency throughout the response. Yankton County receives all of the 911 funds for the county. And typically, historically, the city of Yankton has operated the 911 center on behalf of the Yankton and the surrounding area. allowable expenses are determined by the state of South Dakota. They're spelled out in their administrative rules. I've included a link in the bulletin list that I gave you. Both the city and the county are allotted on an annual basis to review those expenditures, make sure that they're accurate and they're appropriate for those funds. And then, in addition to that, this year we had additional requirements that came along with the new revenue. 911 centers' costs are weighted very heavily, both on the labor side and the technology side. There aren't really a lot of other costs. The Yankton and all of the PISA statewide have really struggled to continue to meet the increase in costs. Public safety answering points have, operating costs have outpaced the minimal growth in 911 revenues. Over the past five years, from 2018 to 2023, 911 revenues have grown about 0.7% on an annual basis. To help cost 911 centers meet the additional costs, the state of South Dakota introduced House Bill 1092, which increases the surcharge from $1.25 to $2 per phone line. That was effective July 1, 2024. This temporary measure was intended to narrow the gap between the cost of operating the 911 center and the revenues that come in to support it. The gap between what the city is receiving in 911 revenue and the ongoing costs of operations have widened significantly during that same time period. Contributing to this cost is computer software, hardware, radios, ongoing maintenance, training, language lines, services, and other technology costs. During the period from 2018 to 2023, the city's cost for operating the 911 center increased about $180,000. During that same time period, our 911 funding went up about $10,000, about 7% to match the 30% increase. The $180,000 of that was all borne by the city of Yankton to operate the 911 center. Currently, our dispatch center is staffed with 11 full-time people. Staffing for us is stable, where we've been lucky right now. 10 of the PISA's in the state are all looking for people. It's been very difficult, challenging, just like the rest of the country as far as go to the position where people are willing and want to come to work and are qualified to do the job. Our lowest tenure employee is just over two years, and our highest tenure employee is over 28 years. We have an average of about 10 years of experience through our staff. We have a great team, in my opinion, operating our dispatch center that are very lucky to have a dedicated group of individuals that have that amount of experience in answering those critical emergency calls. In 2023, Yankton's PISA had a record-setting year for 911 calls. 7,652, 63,878 non-emergency calls, and handled 19,822 calls per service. A recent change in call handling is routed most of the Yankton County Sheriff's Office routine calls to the dispatch center. Previously, dispatch had only handled calls after hours and on the weekends. The state provided us estimates for the new revenue from the surcharge increase. $69,000 in 2024 and about $138,000 in 2025. The county probably would have received the first increase check in September of this year, which would be July's collection with the higher increase. Should be a little bit over $30,000 if my math is right. The surcharge increase is temporary, and it's important that we fully utilize the new revenue to support operations. The current surcharge expires July 1 of 2026 and less extended by the legislature. And that's the entire surcharge. That's not just the increase. Along with the increase, as I mentioned earlier, several additional reporting requirements, monitoring, evaluation measures are all added for PISA's. I anticipate the state, in addition to reviewing PISA call volumes, efficiency, and consolidation options, one of the things that will be examined was how is the new revenue utilized? So statewide, PISA's said, you know, we need more money to operate. And the idea would be is that those funds would be used to operate the PISA. It'll be a difficult sell for the legislature to keep those funds in place if they aren't being utilized. The city would request budgetary approval to use the new funds to help meet increasing costs in both 2024 and 2025. And one of the specific questions that came up from the county during the budget workshop was some questions about utilities or repair and maintenance. None of those expenditures are city expenditures. All of our expenditures are labor and a small amount for training and expenses associated with it. I'd encourage you, if you haven't already, to schedule a time to come into dispatch, see what the operation's like, get an idea of, feel for the technology that's in place. The bulletin printout that I handed out to you shows a picture of what a dispatch center or station looks like, which has substantially changed over the past few years. I appreciate your time and consideration in reviewing the budget request for the 911 center, and be glad to stand for any questions you might have.
Dwight, right?
That's right.
So could you go over one more time? Almost was a $124,000 increase from proposed 2024 to proposed 2025? And that is going to the computers and what else is that going for?
So it'll go to increased labor costs. The city's made some significant investments in labor to try to be competitive. We've done quite a few raises in the salary rate. We've done some additional pay for weekends and holidays and training paid in addition. So one of the dispatchers is acting as a trainer. A lot of our software packages have added additional fees and have increased substantially. For example, our Power Phone software, which is our step-by-step training software. Traditionally, we pay them on a per-training basis. We get a new employee, they go through the training process, we pay for it. Now they're requiring a site license. So that's a $4,500 annual cost that we never had before. Today, we got a call from our radio vendor and our Z-tron Max, which is our radio consoles. They're requiring us to do a technology refresh to maintain our maintenance with $108,000.
So what percentage of the 120 is labor versus equipment? Like, is it, do you have a breakdown?
Of the increase, no, I didn't specifically split it between the two. The detailed budget sheet should be a pretty good idea as far as what the labor costs are, as far as the overall operating.
Sure.
No, I understand.
And the reason I ask, I actually sat in on a couple of these HB1092 budget meetings, and it was one heck of a pain to get this passed. One of the big concerns was a lack of consolidation. Once these PISA, I know, I know Bon Home still has one. Clay County is building a new one. And then when we go to our district meetings, many houses and big dispatch center where they, they said they could run probably East River, but certainly this area. Has there been any talk about consolidating? Because the reason there's a sunset on here is, you know, some of our own legislators even said that they want to see consolidation, or this will not.
Yeah. So both from a local standpoint and a statewide standpoint. So the state implemented a, initiated a study to look at statewide issues as far as PISA's. Is there rooms for consolidation? Is there efficiencies that can be gained? And that study, I think, was about $70,000 to look at the entire state. And I think that study will probably come out with some recommendations. We've been approached twice in the last probably five years to take on an additional county because of increasing costs in their local jurisdiction. And we've developed proposals both times for them. They've chosen at that point to stay where they are currently. I think that there's opportunities. Yankton is slightly under the threshold to qualify as a regional center based on our population. But, you know, we certainly would be willing to partner with other agencies and provide services for them.
Because I believe Davidson County is taking over Hutchinson and most of the small counties around them. So that, from hearing from the legislators is that they're going to basically demand something along those lines. And it was, they almost didn't make it out of the meeting. I think we're going to have a tough road. We talked to the House Majority Leader just a couple of days ago, and he told us, "Don't look to the state for any funding. Figure it out yourself." So I think we both have a tough road ahead when it comes to funding.
Well, I think you can appreciate the need to use the money and use it appropriately too to show that, you know, it was, the costs have gone up exponentially. When your only revenue stream goes by less than one, less than 1% over a five-year period.
Hey, that's accounting, but we understand.
It's the same problem that every, every local government has.
So you're, you're just wanting the, the $911 we collect? Or you want an additional funding above and beyond what we collect out there?
No, I'm asking for is the new revenue from the increase in the surcharge be directed budgetarily to operate our local 911 center.
I have two questions. Is there a reason that the sheriff's calls are being routed through the 911 dispatch? Don't they, don't they have two secretaries there, eight hours a day?
That'd be a great workflow question for them. I know that Julia met with the sheriff, and they expressed an interest in having us help fill that role, and we were glad to do that.
And my second question is, how many of the 911 calls are ambulance-related versus crime-related?
So I can give you...
Or lost dog-related?
I can give you a rough idea on total calls of service, but I don't think we have a breakout on the 911 calls specifically. So of the 19,822 calls for service, ambulance, Yankton County EMS, 2,224.
Those are ambulance-related.
Yankton County EMS was the primary responder.
I recall when we were doing the budget, we didn't really have a problem with all those extra 911 funds going, 911s going to the, towards the center. I think there was some debate about what those, what that dollar amount is of, how much it was.
Would Patty not be in here pressure run it past her? Yeah, because there was some questions on the budget, we were budgeting for electricity and utilities.
I swear, I think it was, the debate was that we had, was that it seemed like Patty thought it was lower than that, than what that was. And I think we all agree that we, we had no problem with diverting all the extra from 10992 911 centers, just sort of a, how much? Be nice if we could change the way our budget is worded and say that that money is directed that way without having to specify a dollar amount.
Yeah, I think that probably what you're seeing for utility expenses is there's a common carrier expenditure that's phone-related, and that's a payment to Loofy. And I think that's plus or minus $1,200 to $1,500 a month. And so it's phone-related. It's not like it's electricity or gas or, you know, it's not what, not the cost to keep the lights on or...
Just as another comment, I'll totally take you upon a tour of the 911 center.
Absolutely.
I'd love to chat with you about the technology there, and we have some technology issues that we need to solve in that center as well. Most of all, we want everything to work together.
Yeah, and all of those facilities, and I don't know if the commission's aware of this, but the sheriff's office, the police department, the jail, and the dispatch center all share the CAT system. They're all connected. That piece of equipment's located in our data, data room. It's shared across the network to the entire organization. We do that routinely with technology and kind of share back and forth, and it works well.
To echo off what you said, I don't have any issues spending the $911 we collect on the dispatch center. I think that's a good use of funds. I'd just like to have Patty a part of this conversation before we make an official motion on it. Because she's, you know, she's the, the hate keeper on that, so. Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you, I think we should discuss that with her and get back with them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with discussing with Patty, but I just want to make a understanding here that we're all in agreement that whatever is collected through the, through the 911 calls will be transported or transferred back to the city rather than putting a specific budget number on it. That we just make sure that that's the case, that the city gets all of those funds. And I don't even have an issue with, like, like you've mentioned, if, if expenses have gone up, looks to me like 10 to 12 to 13% in the last, since 2018, which is five years ago, and the income has not. I mean, are those expenses that have been bearred by the city?
Yeah, the expenses from '18 to '23 went up 30%.
So I guess I don't have a problem with looking at some assistance there either as long as, as long as we work together, one way or the other, with, with assistance on expenditures between the city and the county.
Absolutely. Appreciate the support. And if you guys have questions that come up when you got an opportunity to visit with us about it, you know, feel free to reach out to either myself or Amy or Julia at Dispatch. And we'd be glad to host you to come in and take a look at the technology. And things have really changed in the last five to seven years. You know, we always joke in the facility that the only thing that's the same is some of the people. Everything else is new.
And I'm sure with technology changing and everything else also, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, that what was, I hit some comments this weekend is radios being used by some of our officials and that, that we're using technology today that was out of date yesterday. So, so I think we, you know, there's a place there also to calculate some, some kind of an increase or whatever for, for technology, extra costs and that too, so. And definitely, either way, we definitely want a top-of-the-notch E-91 system for people who call and they have an issue, so.
Yeah, nobody falls down alone. They're best at that, for sure.
That's right.
It's also, I think, one of the things, as Dan said, is the state is really looking for consolidation on these centers. I think it's very important, as you said, when they come, definitely try to see what we can do to start becoming that regional center, I think. And if we plan for that together, I think, I think that's going to be more feasible.
And one of the things that we've tried to do is keep on the cutting edge for technology too. So we were the first agency in the state to have a mobile 911 and call answering system. So we have a mobile laptop, a mobile radio system, our CAT is mobile. So we can take three laptops and go anywhere with internet and answer 911 calls at dispatch resources. So it's, it's incredible technology, but it's expensive and it's expensive to keep up.
To Ryan's point, many of our biggest supporters that helped pass this in the House and Senate aren't coming back. So when this is set to expire in the 2026 session, it's going to be a lot tougher fight. And it was a very tough fight this time. It's going to be a lot tougher. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Dwight. Mr. Horn, you're up next.
Hello, everyone.
Actually, first of all, I did learn something this week out in here. Can I get a motion from one of our commission members to hear the public defender's contract?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Don, second by Wanda. Further discussion?
Now don't we have to vote?
No, we got to do discussion first, and Mr. Horn has the floor.
Just as a matter of housekeeping, prior to today, but not with enough time for Mr. Horn to get the revised contract into the packet, I asked him to change Article 1 Sub A to October 1, 2024 through October 31, 2027. I asked him to modify under Article 2, A Sub 7 to go from all involuntary committal actions to all involuntary drug and alcohol committal actions. And I asked him to add or clarify that the public defender's office would be doing misdemeanor on Article 2, A Sub 5, that it would include magistrate court appearances and crimes that are in conjunction with Lucy Youngberg's public defender contract and relative to conflicts.
I mean, those are really good changes you made, Wanda.
Is there a reason to have Lucy's name put in there at all, in case three years from now it's not?
Well, because right now she's the one that has the contract. And if, if there's a different person at some point in time, then we can amend this to include that person, whoever that person is.
Would it be better to just say, in conjunction with the public defender contract? Would that work for them?
No, because we're filling, they're filling the gap where Dan Fox used to have the magistrate court contract, and Lucy Youngberg used to have the other portion. So now the Horn Law Office is doing the Dan Fox portion, and Lucy Youngberg is still doing the Lucy Youngberg portion. That's why I put it in that way.
About who said, said, with said, public defender?
Because then there's a question of whether it's going to be Lucy Youngberg, or Tyler Matson, or Nikki Brandt, or Brandy Dant, or Sherry Kletzky. That's why. I'm trying to reduce the out-of-pocket county cost for public defender expenses related to indigent people. And I know Mr. Kettering is a big fan of providing legal services to indigent people.
Well, I think, I think as long as you're confident that if something changes, we can change the contract, I'm okay with it.
Internally, she's, she's going to renew her contract anyway, so it personally goes longer than mine. So I don't, I don't believe that's an issue.
I think those are good changes you made, Wanda.
And now that I've interrupted Mr. Horn's presentation.
That's probably Lucy's presentation.
That was another one. But obviously, we previously appeared during the time that we were doing the budget, and we proposed this new contract through negotiations. We've come up with this document here. Everybody has a copy of it. Just real briefly, this basically takes care of a few voids that were created. Dan Fox, with his retirement and stepping away, he ended up the path of the magistrate court cases that were not taken care of through the PD contract. I'm picking that up. We're also picking up leftover AMNs, juveniles, and drug and alcohol committals. This gives an extension of three years on my contract, and so you'll fill that until October 31, 2027. So I'm going to answer any questions, but I think we've gone through everything else.
This is fine for you and Wanda, and I, I know you guys know what the indigent legal, that's, this is just for the ones that that won't take. That does appeals, abuse and neglect, and abuse corpus. And that, this is separate from, from that, correct?
This contract does not include ex people. That's, that's right.
Wait for a motion. So I would, I would accept a motion at this time to accept this contract with Horn Law Offices?
I would move to, for the county to accept the amended contract from Horn Law Office, which was presented today, this evening.
That's this one?
By Mr. Horn, yes. The one in hand with the corrections.
Okay. I have a motion from, by Wanda. Would now accept a second? Second. It was second by Ryan to approve the contract, the public defender contract to Horn Law Offices. Any further discussion by the committee?
You know, just further discussion for the audience. They might not be aware, this is another unfundamental mandate placed on us by the state that we have to fulfill. is another unfortunate mandate placed on us by the state that we have to fill. Don't have much choice, so.
Yep. Time for vote, all in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations, Gary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
You may. Okay, Rob, or, yeah, Rob, you had a, I need a motion to, uh, bring the vacated portion of the section line.
I would so moved.
Second. I have a motion by Wanda, second by Ryan, to bring the vacated portion of the section line to discussion. And Rob, you want to lead us in discussion?
I can lead the discussion. This is a house, I live on four thirty-four, kind of out at the lake. I believe the house is forty, fifty plus years. Uh, just recently, they were attempting to sell the house, and then they found out that they were about a little over six feet, um, on the section line on four thirty-four, and I don't know if any commissioners have been up there, you can kind of see when you drive, you kind of see it, you're kind of up a little higher, it's the top of a six stall garage is what I think it is. So I did talk to the title company and ask them, uh, what would kind of solve this issue? They did say if we vacated the exact portion, um, of the garage, that would be on, um, the section line, um, there, there would be a setback issue, but they've been there so long, so it would predate installing, so they wouldn't have to ask the request for variance on the, on the setback. So I'm just asking for, um, the county to agree to vacate just that portion, and I think you have it, and it should be, I think they've already had it, so. And if there is an issue with the county in the future, I think we, we can fix it, but at least for the property owners at this time, um, that would solve their issue regarding that residence and not having to tear down that six-stall garage that's been there for even, quite a few years.
Yeah, well, I know it's been there since at least nineteen eighty-seven.
Yeah, so at least from eighty-seven to today.
And that's just a section line, there's no, no road or anything going through there at all, at this, at this point in time?
Yeah, it's, it's just, I would say, yes.
Close to a ravine.
Close to a ravine, yeah.
I don't think you'd want to put a road there.
Rob, do you want a motion on this, or is this, we, this is a public hearing, where we have to open it up, or how do you want?
I would, let's open it up for any comments, if anybody wants to make a comment.
So at this time?
Yep.
Open up for public comment? See no public comment?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vacate the section line.
Very. I have a motion by Dan, second by Don, to vacate this portion of the section line that's, uh, outlined in our packet by Mr. Clemish. Any further discussion? Hear none? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is, uh, the ambulance. I need a motion to bring the ambulance to discussion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Don, and, did I hear a second?
Yeah, second.
Second by Dan. Further discussion?
Do you want to open it up for public comment first, or do you want to do some?
Public comment? Let's have a little bit of discussion by the commission first to start with. Wanda, you want to say something?
Well, yes, I'm confused why we approve the agenda and then have a separate motion on every single thing on the agenda.
Well, according to what we learned this weekend and Robert's rule of order, in order to bring something that is on the agenda, we have to have a motion and a second to bring it there, right? Is that what I, did I word that correctly?
You have to have a motion open to be passed, so, and you've been doing a motion to bring it on the agenda, we have to have an emotion, a motion, yeah, to have discussion, to have a motion that we're discussing, yes. That's the, uh, that was the gist of it, yes, yeah.
Vague.
So then, we have a motion to have the ambulance folks come up and talk, or are we going to talk and then they're going to talk?
We can talk and bring them up.
If they, if they got anything to say, or the public, I guess, let them talk. I got a few things I'd like to go over to you, I guess, but, however you want to do it, Mr. Chair.
I think we need to discuss first of all, why we need a motion to bring here, so.
No, I guess, man, it's been well over a year ago we started talking about this, and I, for some reason, I got picked, uh, to lead the discussion, I don't, I don't know how that worked out. So, you know, I guess there's been a lot of pushes since I've been on the commission. Four years ago, we had a task force to look at the ambulance, and, um, there wasn't a lot of, wasn't a lot of decisions made on that, but then about a year ago, we had a citizen who didn't have a very good experience, uh, with our ambulance, and that's what kind of started this, um, this next look, and, uh, there was a lot of issues, staffing shortage, employee turnover, uh, many issues, but, uh, in twenty twenty, just so everybody, if, uh, we remember, we, we looked at many of the same issues that we're dealing with now, and back then, as now, sustainability is a huge problem. Four years ago, the decision that was made was to outsource billing, and it, now it seems four years later, the decision is to change nothing else but now bring the billing back in-house, and I just don't know if that is going to solve any of the answers. Uh, the problems that we've dealt with when we got the, uh, are dealing with the AP Triton report is non-payment, no insurance on by individuals, increased cost, uh, substandard medical reimbursement, again, these problems are all outside our control, and a building that is now a hundred and twenty-two years old, originally built in nineteen oh two. So what I feel we need to do is we, we just need to get some sort of future plan, what are we going to do? The latest report, we've all read it, from AP Triton, says that our population will very likely continue to grow, highly dependent population that we have, we have homeless, the poor, underinsured, the number of people on Medicare, Medicaid, the reimbursement rates that are far too low for us to be sustainable, and, um, the, the members that are on those types of insurance are going to continue to grow as a higher and higher percentage. Another thing that we have to consider, our, our ambulance and other people in the community have done a good job of getting people on Medicaid, but Amendment F could very well take a lot of these people who are now eligible for Medicare and have to not have Medicare, and if they don't have insurance, um, that would certainly hurt us. So, uh, again, uh, it's something we got to consider, a hundred and twenty-two-year-old building, uh, was initially built in nineteen oh two, we've maintained it well, but I, I feel that we've personally outgrown that, and, uh, what is the new facility going to cost? Got talking with some, uh, fellow commissioners about this issue, I mean, the ballpark estimate is probably around ten or twelve million if we have to build the new facility, being realistic, and where's that dollars going to come from? South Dakota Code of Fight Law thirty-four eleven A, it really limits our options, you know, the options we have, county-run ambulance, like we have now, city-run, I don't think we've got any takers, I, I guess I don't, I don't blame them, uh, fire-based system, uh...
What kind of system?
Fire-based system, like Mitchell has, um, fire district and ambulance district combined, hospital run, which there's no interest from our hospital in doing that, uh, private pay or offer no ambulance services. I guess those are, those are the choices that we have. Advantages and disadvantages that I have is, uh, county-run is what we have now, and again, we're the largest company by far that has a county ambulance, most counties don't. Counties are really not set up to run ambulances because it's based off a profit tax, which we know that gets tougher and tougher all the time. There's a lot of city-run, but I, I guess I don't, I don't blame the city for not wanting to, to take this on, I, I can understand that. A fire-based system, uh, there's not much interest in that either. And so what, what is left? You know, hospital run, again, there's no interest, so ambulance district, county-run ambulance, private pay or, or no ambulance, that's, those are the options that we have. And it's my opinion that the ambulance district makes the most sense. The, the next one is maybe a private pay, and I guess it's our job here as a commission is we got to decide what we want to do, we've been, we've been talking this around, uh, for a long time, and I would say, if we are going to decide to keep the ambulance as a county ambulance, that's fine, that can be your decision, but then we also need to plan on the future, and that future includes a, uh, new ambulance building, and, and it's likely on the low end, ten million, probably more, so we're going to need to start planning now, where's it going to go, and how are we going to pay for it? So if we're going to go down the road to keep it, we need to do that, and we also need to look at employee turnover and, and pay, so if we're going to keep this, I mean, we need to make this into a better, uh, a better system, so, um, as being put in charge of this, I would say my official, my official recommendation to the board would be to do an ambulance district, and there's a couple reasons for that, and, uh, first one, I think it would be the best fit, but second, it gives the citizens of Yankton County an opportunity to vote, because it will go to a vote, and if they're going to be paying for an ambulance service, they should be allowed to vote and say yes or no. And so I think that's important, to let the citizens decide. Again, if we choose to keep, um, this, I think we're going to have to invest in it, and I would also recommend that we sit down with the city and we ask, uh, I don't want to put a specific amount to it, but we ask the city for some sort of financial contribution. Uh, third, again, if we do keep as a county-based system, um, we need to set up a task force and, uh, and find a location and start looking for a new place to build the new medical facility, because that's going to need to happen. And then finally, um, on page six of the AP Triton report, we, uh, for some reason, we're still covering South Yankton, Nebraska, uh, many of the state parks in both Cedar and Knox County, and, uh, I guess we need to look at that, um, and talk with those local governments, and if we're going to continue in that footprint in Nebraska, we need to get some sort of contribution from those local entities, because I don't feel it's right that we're spending Yankton County tax dollars in another state. So, um, I guess I would, I would answer the question that I'm able to, that is my recommendation.
So I'm, I'm not certain that we can make a decision on, on a, a, a direction we want to go, to see.
No, and if we were going to do a district, a resolution.
I do want to state, I did talk to, also this, this week, I talked to the McCormick, McCook County Commissioners, and they do have a privately-owned ambulance service, and the county is actually writing them a check for three hundred and four thousand dollars a year at this point in time. So basically, the ambulance, privately-owned ambulance service is actually still costing them three hundred and four thousand dollars a year.
And didn't, didn't, with the new billing system come into effect, aren't we just short two hundred thousand versus what it was previously?
We're going to give Eric and Troy an opportunity to, to let us know what that, where that's headed also. And, and of course, I'm, like I said, I'm, I, I just, I think we need to make sure that we give our current ambulance service director and, and his staff an opportunity before we make any major decisions. I agree with you that we do need to plan for the future for a facility, but, but that will, that'll be something that our emergency management system, ambulance system, um, you know, there's going to be other, other departments that will be involved in, in the, in that planning process, so.
I also want to ask, just because your first two options, district or private, that does not, those two options do not erase the fact that we still have an unearned two-year-old building, we still are going to have to look at replacing that building, as John said, that's shared with multiple, uh, other services, and, you know, you have districts that are going to have to build a building, and, you know, you're, whether you put the cost here or there, the cost of that, that problem, it does not get automatically solved by...
Making a district.
Making a district.
True. Well, I guess my point is, is if we're going to continue how we are, going to continue, we're going to have to, uh, look to the future, because that building, you mean, it's set in our own report that that's substandard, that, you know, what happens when you're, you're dealing with sick people, you can't respond, and somebody perishes, I guarantee you that's going to be part of the lawsuit, so.
Perishes from what? Having the ambulance in an old building, that makes no sense. It's not like the ill person is at the ambulance park.
Or maybe, maybe they can't get out because the garage door won't, who knows what happens, so.
So at this time, Eric and Troy, would you want to come up and just give us, enlighten us a little bit on, on the progress that you've made in the last six or eight months?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to come visit with you. I understand as the task force, you've been tasked with a difficult concept. However, we've also discussed, uh, with you, if you go, the different styles that you're looking at, the pitfalls of those. Um, either way, if you go to the tax district, it increases everyone's taxes in the county on top of what they're already paying.
How would we do that? If we don't, because right now, maybe the last budget, we did one point four million dollars was our task ask for the ambulance. Now, if we don't take that one point four million, but an ambulance district does, how has that increased anybody's taxes?
Because you're going to have to substantially increase that tax to offset the new building and making sure that we don't get the coverage of the counts. But to answer your question, uh, because it always comes back to the dollars, um, from January first, twenty twenty-four, to September fourth, twenty twenty-four, our total receipts are eight hundred and four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. Back earlier this spring, I reported as we were going to the new billing, I shot low and said about eight forty-eight. Well, we're not even at the end of the year, and we're almost at that mark, we're bringing in a hundred thousand dollars per month, so we're, we're really set this to bring in roughly one point two million, which would put us just shy of, we're right along two hundred thousand dollars short. I remember Don making the comment, if we could get back to that, that would be phenomenal. You know, we're trying to close that gap, our billing ladies are doing a phenomenal job with it. When it comes to staffing, currently, we're one full-time E and T short, and we're working on a plan to do that, our staffing is actually doing really well right now.
There are a couple of dollars, though, that we're, we're getting our owed from past years, I mean, is that the money that was just billed and gotten in, because, you know, we all know AM Law, what was the billing, what are the...
Q and C.
E and C, probably wasn't, Q and C wasn't doing a very good job. So are we billing from years past, and I think it's going to take...
Do you mean, are they collecting old debts or, or current debts?
And the best way to do this is take a snapshot of the last, instead of just this area and time we collect that much, how much have we collected in the past year, an average amount?
And I, we can do that.
Yeah, that's great.
However, to answer your question, when it comes to ambulance billing, depending on which insurance you have, some of them you can only go back six months. So that takes, that takes that equation kind of out, some of them are up to a year, and so yes, the billing ladies have gone back of what Q and C missed that long, and tried to collect some of that, but when we're still averaging almost a hundred thousand dollars a month, that trend is still cycling positively without picking up old accounts. Now, to be realistic, we've offered the opportunity for you guys to come down and sit with our billing ladies to learn how that process goes. They're continuously working in back months, that process just never ends, they, they don't get a bill at the end of the month. They don't get a bill at the end of the month, you know, for, if we would come to pick you up. That's not how the insurance companies kinda work is they're always working probably a month, month and a half behind and those ladies do a very good job of getting those in in a very timely manner. As, as for your comments about going into Nebraska, we actually have a contract that was signed shortly after I came on for the Easy Shop from an attorney down in Omaha. They specifically asked us because of our location, it's closer than any other agency there. But there are other agencies other than the ambulance service that goes across the river too. L and C Management goes over there. I've seen the Sheriff's Department that have helped respond to the calls. So we're not the only entity that just doing that.
I think Paul adds a joint powers. That may be something we can look at with you guys.
And we're also aware that we had a meeting with the ambulance service in Proctor, Nebraska a few ago. They had invited us down here to kinda discuss some of our responses that happen across the river. And they also invited the St. Helena Why Not Ambulance Service, which is just to the east. And we discovered at that time, I was not even aware that Proctor has a tax district for their ambulance. It comes all the way from South Yankton up to Highway eighty-one. And on the east side of Highway eighty-one, St. Helena and Why Not have a tax district as well. So they're already in a tax district down there just across the river. What we have is more or less a mutual aid agreement that says if somebody who is a mile away from here calls nine one one and needs an ambulance, they're not gonna wait for a Proctor or a St. Helena or Why Not ambulance to travel fifteen or twenty miles to get there when there's an ambulance a mile away. So that's why we take care of those ambulance calls down there. We do bill for those ambulance calls and we get revenue from that. In, in trying to answer the question that you had about how much of that revenue is coming from the previous years when we were with Q and C? In those three years, I think we had figured, going all the way back to the beginning in those three years, there's approximately six hundred and eighty thousand dollars of claims that had not ever been billed. As Eric mentioned, we could only go back six months to a year in some of those cases. So if you, if you take the average, there was probably, you know, only two hundred thousand dollars per year that was not being billed and we can't even collect all that. So I think that some of that revenue that you're seeing in that eight hundred thousand dollars that we've collected so far may be some of that from the, they have collected bills from Q and C. But I also think that now that we have two full-time builders in the office who are doing collecting, plus a part-time builder that comes in one or two days a week to help out, I think that's really made a big difference in the revenue that we're, that we are collecting. In the presentation I gave a couple of months ago, I showed you what the revenue was year by year from 2019 through 2023. There was only one year that we hit eight hundred thousand dollars and that was in 2021, which was the exact amount that we've already got. For this year, we had eight hundred and four thousand dollars collected in 2021 for the entire year. We're only two-thirds of the way through this year and we've already met that. So I, I think that the task force made their decision to go to that third-party builder. A year and a half ago, we discovered that there were terrible issues going on with that. They couldn't fix it. I think it was a great decision for us to bring that building back in-house at this point because so far it's paying off and I think it will continue to do that.
Okay. Amy, it looks like you need to, wanna make a comment?
Well, I, I also have a question if.
She wants to get the city involved.
Well, I wanna, I wanna be involved to the extent that I'm understanding. And please clarify if I'm wrong. My understanding from our discussion, your discussion this summer and the presentation, which I thought was great, by the way, which I've referred a lot of residents to look at on your website that Mr. Coleman and Mr. Van Duzen quote gave this summer, was that there was gonna be a period of evaluation and we were going to study this for some time before we come back and readdress. And so my understanding was that timeframe was closer to a year from now than a couple of months. So if I'm mistaken, let me know. Because I'm also on the committee that was, worked with the county to help AP Triton make some updates to the study that I think both the city and the county wanted clarification on. And we were not aware that we were moving this far ahead. So I just, I'm just confused, which is not new, but I just wanna understand what happens there.
I'm, I'm on the same boat that you're on.
Okay.
I thought it was going to take longer.
I thought so too. I thought we, we look like we'd have a great track happening here and I'd like to see where this is leading before we make a change of another, a very, very big change.
On the jerk reaction.
And I've also talked to other counties too this, the last couple of days. And a little bit, they are a little bit envious of our position. And it does sound like we are on track to have a very cost-efficient solution to something that costs the other counties or other cities quite a bit money.
So that is what we're doing then? Or is something else happening tonight?
I think that's what we're doing. That's what I thought we were doing.
Thank you.
Do we wanna put, what, what kind of county you wanna put on this?
I think, I think that we need to give this, and, and we're gonna have an election next November that if, if we see this thing taking a shipwreck from between now and, let's say, April of next year, April, May of next year, then, then it'll be a time. Okay, two years from now, that's, that's correct. But if, if, if we see, because we can't get it on this, this year's election, on our ballot this year.
It could, if, what could be a special election?
I don't, I don't think a special election. After, after the primaries this year, I don't think that would be a very wise thing to do.
So, so two years?
So I would say April, May of, of twenty-six. And let's take a look at it and, and, because I, I think that's a fair amount of time for, for Eric's and his, and his crew to give us an actual definite pattern on what we're gonna do. I do, however, do think that we need to look at and start planning for future building sites and, and things like that. But that's gonna take a lot of time and effort to, to put something together there too.
Well, if, if we're gonna keep it for any amount of time, that has to happen. And it's not gonna get cheaper.
No, no, I, I definitely understand that.
From, from the report, it, there's been out there good things to say about it, so. I guess then I consider, you know, Don appointed me for strategic planning to look into this and give a recommendation. I consider my duty fulfilled that.
Well, we, we appreciate your recommendation.
That's my recommendation and that's, that's mine. But I, I consider that fulfilled my obligation to that, so. But I, I would recommend, Mr. Chair, for the next meeting that we do some type of study or group to look at the costs associated with the new building and a new barn. Because we're obsolete now and waiting two more years with the call volume that is predicted. I don't want us to be in a position where that facility is no longer able to serve the citizens of the community and then we start planning for it.
So how about this? Since your obligation for the, this is over, why don't you take on the others' responsibility?
I, I've had enough ambulance for a while, so.
Okay. All right.
But, but according to the report too, and this is the math that you guys provided, part of our district is actually in Nebraska. And that's according to AP Triton, and I remember.
Our coverage is in Nebraska, yes. But we can't, we can't do anything for collecting, you know, any access to another state.
I, yeah, and I don't have a problem with helping our neighbors. But, but having, you know, our official part of our zone in, in another state doesn't really sit that well with me. And I would ask if you guys would be willing, do a joint, some sort of joint powers agreement with them. And if we help them out a few times, that's fine. But if we're making ten, fifteen trips a month, that's when we need to start rethinking. And particularly concerning is the amount of growth that is happening in that area with not only housing, campgrounds and other things. We just don't want to put more of a burden on you guys.
I'd say our average is probably closer to ten to fifteen calls a year down in that area right now. There's, there's not a huge population though. And another thing to keep in mind with, with the facility, I agree with you completely. I've been over in that facility the entire twenty-three years that we've been over there. And I've seen the changes going on and we are making closets in offices over there. We're outgrowing space quickly and we've got a lot of problems. We've got a lot of issues with the building itself as well that really need to be addressed or we need to move on to something better. But there's other options as well. It doesn't need to have to, it doesn't have to be just an ambulance facility. There are other emergency organizations that are talking about moving into another facility. There are a lot of other counties that have created a, an all public service building.
So it sounds like the discussions need to start taking place?
Yes, there's been, there's been some discussions on it, kind of offhand discussions, but there needs to be something officially underway for that, yes.
It sounds like we need to have something like a group to gather the specifications of what the future building needs to be in terms of size and capability.
Yes.
And it'll likely have to be some sort of bond to pay for that.
Yes.
And to, and to seek out to see if or what partners should be in that building. And, you know, can we come up with a shared building that is, provides value to you more than just the ambulance?
Could you come up with a list of some recommended entities that you would recommend be a part of the conversation and could get it provided? Well, again, I just, I don't want us to, you're, you're kinda busting up the seams now. We, we, you know, who knows? We, we, none of us might be here in two years. And then it could be four years and now you really need that facility and we're, we're behind, you know, the power curve. So I'm just saying, let's have a conversation now. Let's maybe even get some sort of estimate so we know what we're dealing with. So down to the question.
One, you said. You might, I think that'd be your, you're, you're thinking you're really gonna need.
No, I was.
That's your beer. That's your beer. You're running for your. We want him to be around.
We want you to be here.
Well, and I, I think there's been some other department heads that have brought this up. And just to reiterate it, every Wednesday morning, all the chiefs get together. And that's all the public service agencies. We typically get together and there's several of them that are having the discussion and it's been on the docket since I started. We should look at a public service building. But that, that becomes a partnership between the city and the county a little bit that I'm not saying can't, can't happen. It's just those conversations need to happen. And we could have a really good, strong front if we include more people and upgrade kind of everybody's at one time. But those are discussions that will happen.
Well, the thing that I look at too is, is our forefathers twenty years ago decided to build jail, stay-at-the-yard jail. That billing is gonna be paid for next year. So, so we, we have opportunities to plan for the future for an emergency management system. We don't have to build another jail because this jail is sufficient for what we have to move forward with. So that's another item, you know, another ticket that we can look at and move forward with.
Just gonna bring something up tonight. I hate to be that guy, but yeah, four James River Bridges need to be replaced. Probably ten million dollars each. We're talking about building a juvenile detention center. We're talking about building a ten to, who knows how much? It's not possible. I just, I mean, it's not possible to do all that. And you guys.
Building it, they will come.
Talking with the legislature, you are getting no help in the next few years. So we're gonna have to make some tough choices.
Yeah, but I'm gonna just put one note on that. You know, we have four James River Jim bridges. If we have to close one, that's not gonna kill anyone. If we have in-employee emergency services, that, that could severely affect us. So, I mean, those are the toughest decisions and, you know, yeah, you have to start thinking about what is the most valuable things to our community. And the actual trip around there might not be the worst.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Good discussion. Thanks, everybody.
Now, do we have to have a motion to talk about Platts?
So I do need a motion to talk about, to discuss.
I was so.
I'll make a motion to talk about Platts then.
I, I have one thing before we go. So what we, what we're doing is we're just, we're not making a decision. And are we putting any timeline on revisiting this? Are we setting up a task force to investigate building? Like what, what is gonna, what is gonna come out of this?
Let's, let's do a task force and we can set up, we can get applications to be on the task force. And let's say the second meeting in October to set up the task force.
Okay, and then as far as. As far as any like shortfalls or just in-house billing is where we're, and we're gonna go with that until?
We're gonna go with that, I thought, until April of 2025.
We're gonna go with that because it's showing very good promise and we wanna see where, we see where it stabilizes.
And I, and I agree, but I, I would say, I would ask that the three-month, the three-month end, we'll report the quarterly end, we get regular updates on how that is going.
Well, the problem with outsourcing our billing was we were paying them to try and collect money and they weren't doing a very good job. So in addition to paying them and not collecting money, we were on the receiving end.
But, but in 2020, we weren't doing a very good job with billing. And so the decision was.
Twenty twenty was COVID. I think everybody was COVID.
This was before that.
And we've hired some new people since then.
So can, can we have an, now, at the quarter, ambulance quarterly report, we're gonna have update on progress and.
Or billing, that's fine.
Okay.
So John, really quickly, I think when we're attending that session, what we want to do is we want to have a motion to approve on the table first and then we open the discussion. You know, we don't have to have a motion to open discussion. We have a motion to approve.
To approve the discussion, okay.
And the discussion, if we don't pass the motion, then it fails.
And then we don't have to discuss.
Yeah.
Okay, now we have our Platts. Here.
Good evening.
I think you can motion for more.
I think, I think you, I think you can do a presentation and then we have a motion after he's done with the presentation. And then that's what I researched it further from the online.
It appears that you all learned how to waste time while you were gone this week.
It was only a minute, thirty seconds for a motion. That's all it's been. And that's what we were told.
Before we go, are we, are we gonna ask the city to help in any capacity as well? Are we gonna not be doing?
Well, they've already left.
Well, no, I'm just saying, we can go to the city and ask.
I think we should.
They've already indicated they don't wanna participate. They don't get paid, but they would like us to give them money.
I would say get on the agenda, ask. If the answer is no, then, then we have an official.
I believe.
I think we should include them in, in our task force.
Yes, I believe that task force should include the city because they are very much a consumer of the ambulance services.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good evening. We have five Platts tonight. First one is Platte Nicholas Farm in the northeast quarter of section nineteen, township ninety-five north, range fifty-five west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Alls they're doing here is basically including what's pretty much outlined already on the farm. They added some trees on the west side, added a fenced-in area where that little boot area is. And so that's, and it's closer to compliance than it was in the past.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Ryan to approve the Sinclair Platte. Further discussion? Here you go. Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries.
Next one's a Platte lots one and two of Hillisland, tip track two in the lot thirty-six of Bay Cliff Estates being a portion of Hillisland Track Two and all of Lot twenty-seven, Bay Cliff Estates, all in northwest quarter, the southwest quarter, and the southwest quarter, the northwest quarter of section eighteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
And what does that do?
This basically just re-subdivided a little differently. As you can see, they pretty much kept the bottom one for one lot. Then they took some of the west side and, and split that and for a second house. And then the property to the northeast of Bay Cliff added a little piece. So there was some separation there.
Are they big enough for septic tanks?
They are all big enough for septic tanks.
Move approval.
On second.
Sorry.
Sorry. Motion by Wanda, second by Ryan to approve the Jacobson Platte. Any further discussion?
It does like a little, like lot thirty-six looks wonky. They are kind of wonky. There's not any problems with that.
It's kind of wonky.
Wonky.
Which, which one?
Thirty-six, the one at the top.
Yeah.
In order to make it big enough, I think they'd have to put that little peggy down part on there.
No, the reason they bought that little piece is so that they're, so basically they could keep their view and not, and be separated from the neighbor to the west. That's the only, that's literally what, what it was. So they have the rest of that lot already.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Opposed, nay?
Yep.
Motion carries.
Next is a Platte Track A of Brewer's Edition in the southwest quarter, the southeast quarter of section twenty-seven and Track B of Brewer's Edition in the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter, southeast quarter, of the southeast quarter of section twenty-seven. And also in the northeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section thirty-four, township ninety-five north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. So this one's just basically shoring up the, the road, that the access road that goes into Beaver Beach Road. They're cleaning that up.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Don. Further discussion?
That was Ryan.
I heard Donna over here. My left ear is better than my right.
I couldn't give it to Ryan.
I don't care.
I'm just glad they got them.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Next one's a Platte lots B one, B two, B three, B four, B five, B six, B seven, B eight, B nine, B ten, B eleven and B twelve of lot twenty-one, Whitetail Run in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of section sixteen. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. This is basically just phase two of some of those condos, yeah, condo buildings.
Can you make them build trees so we don't have to see them from the road?
Well, that wasn't a condition when it went through initially, so.
How about, how about going forward? They put that in there.
Is it, is it a permitted use?
For, for discussion, I think it would, would approval.
Second.
So now we have a discussion about this, correct? And we, Ryan moved to discuss and Wanda, seconded that.
So my one question on this is that, you know, this is kind of the first time we've done a plot like this where we have shared walls in these condos. And so just want to make sure that it's documented properly and, and stuff and then just, so it's, there's an easement that's, an ingress easement that's laid out there. That's pretty much the space between all the units.
Right.
Yeah.
Have we done a lot of, like with the duplex, a lot of times it's the, the same.
And that was a big discussion when we went through the ordinance and changed that to allow that zero setback in between. But this is something that's going on all across the state. There's some up in Mitchell. There's some in Aberdeen. It's real popular. They seem to rent out fast and so there's, there's a lot of use for them.
So the, so the lots be like, be whatever, that is just the building or is?
Yeah, it's, it's basically like a garage more or less and.
And so that's the lot policy is the building.
They use that for the legal description for those.
And each one has a bathroom, correct?
Each, come on out. Each one has a bathroom.
Yeah, they should.
So people can live there. They're not supposed to, but.
This is zoned lakeside partial, so they would have to come in for a CUP to live there.
Right.
Yeah, if they wanted to follow the rules.
Yeah. But if someone is living there and they don't have a C, and none of them have a CUP, then they would have a zoning violation.
Yes.
You would hope that legally that they're making sure that isn't occurring.
So do we now vote or just?
Further discussion? I would ask now for a motion to approve the Platte for Goshen Nation.
To move.
Second.
Got a motion by Dan, second by Don to approve the Platte for Goshen Nation. Any further discussion at this time? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Last one's Platte Track one, Dear Boulevard Estates in the southeast quarter of section nine. Township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Now we're moving into the next north, twenty-plus acres. This, this first one's just on the other side of that one we approved in the past. And so that'll eventually get put into four lots, just like it is to below it.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Wanda to approve the Platte for Drotsman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same, opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you. Nice catch.
Next item, Affordable Housing Commission, assuming Dan and Don.
I'd make a motion to discuss affordable housing.
Second.
Second. Motion is second for discussion on affordable housing.
Part of our strategic planning last year was to see what the county could do to facilitate affordable housing. And there's a limited number of things that, that we can do as, as a county. But we sat down together, brought in a banker, a real estate individual. And we sat down and discussed different things that they felt the county could do to improve the ability for somebody to buy a reasonable priced house. And we came up with the following recommendations and I'm just not asking for any approval or disapproval. I'm just informing you of what, what our little group talked about and, and in the documents you got there. As in section six thirteen, minimum lot requirements, the minimum lot area shall be two acres. And previously it was five acres. Under modern density R two, seven thirteen minimum lot requirements, the minimum lot requirement shall be forty thousand square feet, which is just a little under an acre. In high density rural residential district R three, the intent of high density rural residential districts is to provide existing conservation residential subdivisions as recorded with the register of deeds and other compatible uses, a pleasant and stable environment. For that, we came up with the extension of these areas is at the discretion of the planning commission and the county commission. In section eight one three, minimum lot requirements, the minimum lot requirements shall be twenty thousand square feet, which is about a half an acre. In commercial, eleven, section ten thirteen, minimum lot requirements, the minimum lot area shall be twenty thousand square feet, which is a half an acre. In section five thirteen, minimum lot requirements, the minimum lot area shall be twenty acres in the past. Now, the base density permitted in agriculture district is one dwelling unit per quarter section to be based where two section lines intersect with a minimum lot area of five acres. All existing dwellings, including those on partials of recorded are counted towards calculation of overall base density per quarter section. Rights have been transferred from a quarter section shall be counted against the base density in the quarter section they have been transferred from. This is basically just to retain, allow real estate landowners, farm, farm real estate landowners, the opportunity to build on their property, bring family members home, those kind of things. The rural areas are getting underpopulated. School buses cost a lot to drive around. And it's thought that if we can improve, if we increase the density in the rural areas, it's a win-win pretty much for everybody. The landowner wins because he doesn't have to sell if he doesn't want to, but if he does, he'll, he'll be able to sell five acres instead of probably twenty. The minimum lot area shall be five acres for any agribusiness as defined herein pursuant to section five oh six, breathy seven. The minimum lot width shall be two hundred feet. The zoning administrator may allow a smaller minimum lot requirement where an established single family home exists or where a permit for a single family home is requested on an existing farmstead site. And the fifth area, lots of record as defined herein, existing prior to adoption of this ordinance may be developed pursuant to article sixteen as approved by the zoning administrator. So we, we look to find ways to make it more reasonable, the price of land, you know, when you had to buy twenty acres or, or even five acres, it'd be easy to get up to be a hundred thousand dollars for five acres, twenty acres, I, you know, who knows what, but, but a lot. And this is just an effort to make it more reasonable to let people move to the country. Both of the existing landowners still has his rights as a landowner. He doesn't have to sell. But if, but if he wants to, he can do it with the requirements that, that we are discussing. So that's what we've been discussing and if, we're, we're ready, I, I think, to proceed forward, Gary. Dan, Gary and I worked on this. We're ready to proceed forward and change the ordinances. But we need to make sure everybody's comfortable with it. So my suggestion would be we do nothing tonight. You've got this document. You can think about it and then at our next meeting, we can put it on the agenda and make a plan on what we want to do.
I have a few just comments really quick. I've read it already.
Say what?
I have a few quick comments if you're up for just now for everyone to think about. Anyway.
Are you sure we don't need a motion?
Very happy.
More discussion, Mark.
Anyway, on first one for the R one, moving the lot sizes, I don't think it's gonna change a lot. My one concern there is that R one allows other things, larger buildings and things like that. We've reduced the lot size now. Are we kind of making, are we now kind of creating a smaller lot with larger buildings and, and creating a new problem there? So it's like one thing. R two, I like that. Forty thousand feet, or forty thousand square feet is much better. And on the twenty thousand square feet for R three, the one caveat there, twenty thousand square feet is the minimum size that you put on good soil, a septic tank or the DNR. However, we are down in the lake area. That soil is more permeable. And we have to be careful that we're not putting R three down there and allowing septic tanks being too dense. So I almost want to have a caveat in there possibly of like saying, as long as, as long as the septic tank is, you know, or something, something to make sure that we don't end up in that path.
Just to note, everything in black is already there in the ordinance. That's what's currently in there.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Like and you're getting rid of the half acre, which that a little avoids confusion there.
You know, maybe an asterisk or some, asterisk or something along the lines, you know, should check permitability.
Needs to meet DNR requirements.
Meeting DNR requirements for the septic tank. And that's all, I think that's all we need to do.
I think.
Yeah, so and then the only other thing is I'll have to read through that five thirteen one there. It gets long. I'm not quite following exactly what that all is gonna be. Maybe we'll have an illustration of that one discussed in the next meeting. But that's it.
Well, we want discussion because we, we want to make this a positive impact on the community and help with our housing situation. So appreciate any comments if you guys can come up with them. It's, this is, this is probably the only area the county can have much impact on housing.
You have to, the, go ahead.
I don't, I don't know how or, or what, how we could do this, but I don't think we should allow just any corner property out in the county to sell off twenty acres for development. I think we should have some way to say, hey, you can do it here, but you can't do it there or something like that. You know, it's a similar situation with the KFOs and, and other ordinances that we have. I don't, I don't think it's a good process to just go out and pick a, a section of land someplace and buy twenty acres because someday, twenty, thirty years down the road, we could end up, end with other issues that we didn't foresee. Now, now if it's a landowner and he wants to corner off a section of his land, he's got a farm there and he wants his son to build onto that property, that's, that's a great idea.
John, are you, are you talking about larger developments or you're talking about a single house?
Larger developments. If you're buying, if you're gonna break it on five acre lots, I mean, granted if, if someone's son or daughter's coming home to build on five acres on a quarter or wherever in the property, that's, that's fine. But some developer goes out and buys five acres and builds ten lots out there.
He'd have to come in and get it rezoned for that.
Yeah.
And then that would be our, our control process.
All they do is change the zoning.
Yeah, but it still requires public comment and input.
I, I just, I don't, and a lot of times we just pass it and move on and then twenty years from now. I mean, it's just like the, the lake area. What, what have we got down there now? Okay, if twenty years ago, somebody would have said something about the.
Twenty years ago, thirty years ago, we had this beautification thing on, on the way to the lake. And then we developed zoning in our infinite wisdom, which was before my time and before Pyne's time and before Kettering's time and before your time. And then they decided that we would make lakeside commercials so we could have businesses out there. We don't apparently can't build businesses. So there we are.
I just, like I said, I don't know how we do it, but it's just a thought that. I think it's a great idea what you guys are doing. Appreciate, appreciate the thought process behind it.
Think through that. Think through it. Let's look at it. Think through it. We had a collective discussion on requiring a person to sell only on the quarter sections, on the section corners. Because there may be a heck of a lot prettier place a few acres down, but to keep buses and traffic and roads and everything else.
It depends on the balance that we're being controlling. Yeah, yeah. And that's why I'm like, that's a long paragraph up there on that one and we'll probably have a lot to talk about that. Make sure we have.
On five thirteen?
Yeah, on five thirteen. Just to make sure we fully understand the impact of that, you know, and making sure that we're not creating a new problem.
So my recommendation is we favor this.
Post what?
Post home, post home this.
We'll have it on the next meeting, yeah?
They know that this is an item that we bring back on the next meeting.
I think we need to really discuss how we. Then I think we need to really discuss how we relay this information to our county entire, the twenty-three thousand people.
Maybe that nice reporter will put it in the newspaper.
I mean, to, to Don, to Don's credit is, I really think this is something that could, could be a positive, and that's why we want everybody's input, and maybe this is a di- the difference between somebody not, not being able to afford a home and somebody being able to afford a home. And we want homeowners, we want homeownership, and we want young families and, and really our families to move to our community and, and be happy, and we know these last few years, homeownership is really out of reach of some people, and that's the American dream, and I, I know I don't, it's tough, like people can't even dream of owning their own home, and so we don't have a lot of options, we don't have a lot of money in the county, but maybe one thing we can do is a little bit of deregulation, and how that ends up, we don't know.
And at all, you know, with Elk Street, families moving to the county, schools going to benefit from it. There were my farming, farming friend, Shaky, he said, no, he doesn't have to sell, he can, he can sit back and chew on reading, anyway.
Okay.
That's where we're at.
Thanks, Don. September third meeting minutes.
Move, move.
Second.
Motion to approve by Don, second by Dan. Further discussion?
Hearing none.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Claims number one.
The only question that I had was on page twenty, there are some claims and bills for the nurse's office. I did talk to the auditor's office, and I guess maybe we need to be a little more clear with them. I guess I don't feel that we should be paying for the rentals for that office any longer or doing their postage. I thought we made a clear break with, with them, that's my thought on it. They're no longer a county organization, they're our tenant, and I guess I don't feel we should be paying their utilities and their postage and those types of items, that's my, that's my thought. The state has got more than enough money to cover stamps.
Do we do them every, every month? I haven't, nobody has noticed them.
We usually pay QPS, which is their postal service, we pay their...
Their microphone isn't on for our bad home viewers.
Thank you. So we pay their QPS, which is their postage, we pay their printer, their rental for their printer, and we pay their internet or phone, BluePeek, whatever that is, so. So yeah, it, it's about three hundred dollars, I would say, average and most.
Okay, I guess I didn't...
We've been doing that since we...
I guess I didn't realize we were doing it.
Yeah, I didn't either, and I noticed it.
So, Rob, could you write a letter to the state on that issue and say, hey, we're not, you know, the, the original arrangement was that you just rented the space and we're not picking up your expenses down there?
Okay, okay. I'd recommend maybe sending this bill to them, I'm, I'm okay with paying it this month, but it shouldn't continue, that's, I mean, is that everybody else's thought? This, the state can afford it.
Yeah, and like I said, I think Rob should write a letter to the state, however you do it, however.
I'll do something nice, as a friendly reminder, at least doesn't provide for us to pay for those expenses.
Rob, do you want us to just approve this and then, I mean, I think maybe we should ask for reimbursement back to January two? That's, that's what I have, but other than that, a motion to approve the first order of the claims.
Second.
A motion by Dan, second by Ryan, to approve the claim, number, the first set of claims. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. And we got a second set of claims.
Move, move.
Second.
Motion by Don and second by Dan. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
I'm abstaining.
Gotcha. Treasurers report, auditor treasures report, pool cash report.
Do you need a motion?
Move, move.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
A second, a motion by Dan, second by Don.
I have a question.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I see we have five thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents in bad checks. Would it be possible to get a list of the names of those bad checks at those amounts so the state's attorney's office can chase them around? Potentially put them in jail.
Certainly.
That would be a good idea.
Is that about the auditor, I mean with the treasurer?
Yeah, the treasurer's gives up, I actually need that report every month, so I have it.
I'll go see Cassie tomorrow, I'll go see her.
That would be good, that'd be fifty-six hundred more dollars than we have.
Well, if we put them in jail, then we'd pay what, six hundred dollars?
That's all right, but we feed them gruel, so it evens out.
Exactly.
And the jail's already there, it doesn't cost anymore. Think we need to pull them out.
Any further, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. DeCair surplus, Caterpillar nine twenty-eight G voter, that is the one that we are replacing, and we need to get that on Bud Laker. I have a motion by Dan, second by Ryan. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now's the time for public comments. Do we have anyone that wants to make a public comment? Here they come.
Here they come.
Here comes the point.
Why don't tip over and make you all laugh at me? I guess, my public comment is...
What's your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Jay Cutts from Mission Hill. Your only comment on the 513 thing and the housing out in the county, this is going to be a little tongue-in-cheek, but a lot of housing is, you know, perception, and a lot of the things are perception too, so now since you've changed article twenty-six, I'm hoping that I get a mild setback from all my property lines and also a forty-five decibel sound limit, because you're putting them out in the ag district, and since you passed article twenty-six, you have basically set a sound noise ordinance for section twenty third ag districts. So it's another thing where, you know, not this commission, maybe the next commission or other people are going to say, well, the windmills can't be forty-five decibels, how come that tractor out there can be more than forty-five decibels? So something for you guys to think about, it's not just windmills, it's all perception.
I'm not supposed to comment, but children are allowed as well.
Yes, they are, thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Any other further public comment? Seeing nobody rushing up to the microphone, public comment is closed. Commission updates. Start with Wanda, what do you got for us?
The, as I understand, the purchase of the Irene property is done, so that we can start moving in.
Good.
To put our winter equipment for the northern part of the county in the Irene project.
Are, are we going to need to spend any money to rehab anything or get things updated or?
The only thing that I can see that's immediate would be a couple of new doors on the, on the, the big shop. They were kind of wind, wind torn.
And the ripping things down, that's pretty inexpensive.
Put them back up though, that's, I just wondered that, you know, is that within the budget to do those, it should be?
I'm sure that...
Yes.
And then, or do we have any type of, just some things to consider, security plan, any, any cameras, because, you know, we're not going to be banned and there's...
We don't have a security plan now in the, in the thing that we have, so we have to take the, the blades off and haul them physically into the thing and lead them against the wall.
All, all I'm, all I'm saying is that maybe should be something that we consider, the shop that we have now does have a fence and it has a few items like that, maybe we...
Not an Irene, it doesn't.
Well, Irene is a small building and there's, there's one piece of equipment in there, maybe sitting outside, I understand, I'm not, I mean, all I'm saying is, let just, in the planning process, let just consider that, because there'll be a lot more equipment up there than there has been in the past.
Okay, Ryan, you got anything for us?
I don't have anything today.
Um, I don't have anything either at this point in time.
Well, I went to Rapid City.
That's why I wouldn't ever let you speak.
To a state convention with three of you fellow commissioners, and it was a good, a, a good session, learned some things, wasted some time, but I'd like to mention that one of the commissioners here is going to be the chairperson for that organization in the coming year, and I'd like to ultimately congratulate him. That's Dan.
Thank you, Don, I appreciate it.
Thank you, it's going to be a lot of work for you to do.
I, I'd just like to say thank you too, and I, I got a lot of positive comments from my fellow commissioners, from other commissioners, and I'd just like to say I'm really proud of all of you guys. We had people talk to each one of you and, and they said, you've got a heck of a good group in Yankton, and that came from many different commissioners, so, from all over the state, so, thank you guys.
Make your motion, remove to executive session.
Second.
Got a motion by Don, second by Dan, to go into executive session. Any further discussions?
No.
Hearing none. We are into...
Aye.
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 Nobody opposed? Any, any nays? Motion passed? Motion passed. I gotta, I gotta do a little touchy-dovey there.
That does not involve...
Exactly, because we want to go into exact next.
Maybe William's happy about that, you and me.
Always I get my mild setback from any of my property lines, I'll be, I'll be...
All right.
Good job, we got a C.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be you, we're gonna be you.
Oh, she, she wasn't that, she did a pretty darn good job. There wasn't a deer in the headlights, look, very...
Whatever, Jay, I was watching her.
Ready to sign?
Yeah, that's so good.
If you had a better chairman, it works easier.
Yeah.
Okay. Don.
Okay.
Okay, coming.
Maybe a pound each there.
Everyone's worried that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there.
That's fine.
I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there.
That's fine.
I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there. I'm gonna worry that, all the Italians about to go on the wall there.
When's absentee voting start?
Tomorrow.
Does it start tomorrow?
It does.
I was thinking it was going to be pretty soon.
Yeah. So it's been really, really busy, a lot of people, you know, coming to get sample ballots and stuff and then of course...
Well, trying to get all them referendum thingies all read through and trying to understand all that crap.
Yeah, and yeah, get those, the packet of, yeah, the what the amendments are and stuff. And then people just simply coming to register to vote. It's quite amazing, like we've had so many new registered voters.
Cool.
Which is, I mean, it's fantastic.
Yeah, that's interesting. People from out of state or just haven't voted for a while?
Well, well, people moving, yeah, people, people moving in from wherever or, yeah, just people wanting to get involved. Because you just hear about it all the time, so, yep. But it's good, Jay, like that's what we want, is we want people to get out and vote.
Yep, and it's better than having to show up and say, I'm sorry, you can't, you're not registered.
Exactly, exactly.
Give your motion.
Let's move to go back into general session.
Motion by Don, second by Dan to go back into general session. Nothing to report or discuss from executive session at this time?
I made a motion to make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Wanda?
A second or a first?
Second by Dan to adjourn, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, we are adjourned.
Yep, you're good, Mark.
I'll read through the...